And we will call this joint session to order. We'll begin with roll call.
Sandy?
Here.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Shite? Miller?
Yes.
Anglin? Erickson?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Deay?
Here.
Matten?
Here.
The pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll move to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the agenda? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. We have an agenda. And we'll go to the presentation by the Rotary Club.
Okay. My name is Peter Nelson. I'm a past president of our Brainerd Noon Rotary Club. I'm also on the district leadership team for Rotary, which extends all the way from western North Dakota to Thunder Bay and south as far as almost St. Cloud. So we are a big, big and international district. So the topic today, our project's basically at Rotary Park. And myself and my colleague, John Forrest, serve as the co-chairs for the Rotary Park efforts. So just as a very brief history, the Rotary Park was, we purchased the first section of land in 2010, which was 35 acres purchased from Robert Sand and Gravel. And today, it is after many, many more donations and expansions, it's over 195 acres, over a mile of Mississippi shoreline and a quarter mile on Buffalo Creek. And it's one of the, we know for certain it's one of the five largest city parks in the state of Minnesota. So we're, we're proud of that history. So when we started that park, it was intended to be an environmental park for people to enjoy the outdoors, make observations and educational opportunities and so forth. So we're thrilled when we see all of the many families and student groups and so forth that actually go make use of the park. We started by making trails that we still keep up today. We mow them, we maintain them and assure that they are passable. We also, in the interest of the environment, we created what we called the Field of Seeds in cooperation with crowing county soil and water. And that is a native seed bank and several other groups have since come to that area to harvest seeds so that they can create their own seed bank. We also have really aggressively tried to eliminate invasive species. The biggest one, of course, is buckthorn. And we continue that effort. This year, we'll have one of the largest efforts where we are going to work on 20 acres of buckthorn. And so many times, the community wants to come down and see the goats, which is the follow-up after the manual effort. And so we have about 250 goats scheduled for about July 1st. We were, the Rotary Club was even awarded Environmentalist of the Year within our conservation district because of our efforts to clean up that area and create the Field of Seeds. We've done other improvements there to try and make it a little more user-friendly. We put in some benches out in the park for, as rest stops. And as you all know, we constructed that large entrance where we can proudly say here is one of the largest parks in the state. And then a few years ago, as they, to celebrate the 100th anniversary of our club, we built the pavilion. And now we see many other groups coming down and enjoying that space. The, there's two major projects that we have on the docket coming up for this year. One is an observation deck. So we're in the process of permitting on that observation deck. And the other is a solar project, which is the project that we'd like to talk about in a little more detail. So let me tell you about this solar project. We think that it fits incredibly well with the emphasis of environmental responsibility. It also is a very good educational opportunity to demonstrate our commitment to the environment and, and how that, how this solar power fits that kind of commitment. And it's a project that eventually, as you've studied solar projects, it eventually results in a positive cash flow. So as a little bit of history on this project, this started back in 2022. And in March of, I think I provided a summary, which most of you have seen. Back in 2022, we made a presentation to Brainerd Public Utilities. And in that, we expressed the need for having one 10-volt power there and the ideal situation for a solar power system. So at that time, I know Brainerd Public Utilities approved that project, excuse me. And as I recall, we're planning to put in a power pedestal, which is required. Whether or not there was a solar project, the power was needed in order to put in the security systems and have electrical power similar to the other pavilions that are part of the park system. So then in 2022, or I should say, this, this project, as it was defined, had a bit of a complicated ownership structure because it required the formation of an LLC. We found some, some Rotarians that were willing to give a no-interest loan to the LLC to complete the project. And at, after five years, they would have been reimbursed. The ownership of the LLC would transfer to the city, along with that, a tax return that's required. And, and this became a cumbersome kind of project to administer. And, and one of the goals was to make this a, a model such that other Rotary Clubs in our district could actually follow. So, but this complexity was kind of a challenge. Then, in, later in 2022, the Inflation Reduction Act was passed. And in that, it allowed cities and nonprofits to participate in solar rebates. Well, this really kind of changed the landscape of how to structure this because now the incentives, if it was city ownership, the incentives would be essentially paid directly to the city rather than some temporary owners of the LLC. So the process is actually simplified from what we first proposed. During 2023, we had some little bit of confusion. First of all, we had to wait till the Inflation Reduction Act was deciphered to the point that you understand what's in it. So in 2023, we, we felt that all parties were still supportive of the project. And there was some confusion as to how much the Park Board was willing to fund and how much would be funded by Rotarians and who would continue to be responsible for maintenance. So also, so anyway, I have to say that my hope for today's meeting is that we have much more clarity on that at the end of the, our discussions. So I want to, this was, this would be considered, I guess, new information. I prepared this handout, which I think I have enough copies. So with any project, one of the things that comes up is, I don't think anybody questions whether this is a worthwhile project, whether it's educational, whether it's environmental friendly, all of these aspects really fit very nicely with the vision statement of Rotary Park. But it's not really within the finance capabilities of our Rotary Club to finance this in its entirety. What we did do, our Rotary Club has set aside $5,000. And we have went to the district and requested a matching grant from our district. This is a typical process when one of the clubs wants to take on a project. And so we, this, the request that we made was granted, and so that has been funded. So I wanted to step through this or briefly explain, this is the way the finances of this project look like. All of this data was previously presented by our solar consultant, David Winkelman. And so this data is just, it's the same data, just reformatted. But what it shows is there's about $38,000 in contracts that, that need to be let. Rotary, in the way that the Rotary District grants are structured, it's, it typically works best if our club would just pay directly for something rather than make a donation to the city. That becomes complicated for Rotary to track. So we would instead pay for materials. Typically, it'd be solar panels and racking. But, and there are rebates available, and our estimate on the rebates is $11,436. But that leaves a net investment of about $16,000. And so I, I think it's, I don't think we can own this inside the city. And I don't, I don't think we can fund all of it. So, which brings us to a request of the Park Board and Brainerd Public Utilities. And, and we're not quite sure how, how budgets work within the city. So we're not quite sure who to, who to make a request to first or second or, and so forth. But this is, in a nutshell, this is kind of how the cash flow would work for this project. So eventually, after some years, it, the project is entirely paid for and actually becomes a positive revenue generator. And as you can see, at the end of this, the lifespan, the projected lifespan is 30 years. And so at the end of this, the original net investment of $16,000 would eventually produce 45,000 net revenue to the city. So that kind of, that is a summary of this project. And I would be glad to entertain questions or try to clarify any of, any of the highlights I've just went through.
Yeah, we'll open up for questions. Any questions for Peter out the gate on the project?
I would have actually questions for probably Trent as far as who would be. I mean, obviously, if there's revenue generated through electricity, probably BPU would be giving the money and recovering it.
If you don't mind?
What?
If I can address that?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, one, this is the first time we've seen these numbers.
Yes.
They weren't presented in 2022. I can say that because I was the one who made the motion at BPU.
No, and, and the landscape changed. So whatever we would have presented in '22 wouldn't have been, it would have been different today.
Yeah, because, I mean, we have, we provided a copy of the minutes, but we didn't have the numbers. And I don't recall, some of us were in the audience that are there too, but a $28,000 cost to the city wasn't talked about. So that was.
No.
So this is all new. So it's really up, it's a new presentation is what I'm trying to say. It's up to you guys to, to make a recommendation to yourselves and to the council if you want to continue with this. But it's a substantially changed presentation from what I remember a couple of years back.
It has. Back in 2022, I mean, this was a simple project that BPU is going to just maybe help install it. And you can have electricity to a pavilion. And that was about all that was said.
Right. Well, so the, the reason it changed is because it's Inflation Reduction Act. At that time, we had arranged for about five investors. Each would contribute $5,000. And so, and they would form the LLC. They would, the, the rebates would go to them. The electricity would go, electricity refunds would go to them. And so they're made whole in that process. After that, the ownership would transfer then to the city for all the future revenue stream. So, but that organizational model was no longer valid. It changed with the, with the Inflation Reduction Act.
So if I could just finish then. So since that time, obviously, public, well, maybe you guys don't know, but we've installed two solar fields, generating close to seven megawatts. And so as far as projects, we've kind of covered those that we've started. And so that's where this commission's got to decide, do we want to spend more money on a project like this? We haven't even identified how many kilowatts it's going to bring in. And so that's a concern. And it's time and effort type situation for, for our commission.
So I just have a few questions then off of, based off of that. One was, what would it, what would it generate as far as kilowatts goes? If the scope, and I'll just throw out a bunch of my questions first, if you don't mind. The scope of the work, has that changed? What the location? Both of our solar projects right now are behind fences and in security. So I don't know that that's part of this project. If, like I said, is the scope of work changed? I would want to know who the, the solar rebates would be paid back to the city. I'm assuming the 11,000. And I know we're just getting these numbers. So size, location and safety. That's going to be my, my three biggest questions that I would have that I would like to see if you guys could maybe answer today.
Size?
Yes. Should I come up there?
Sure, please.
My name is David Winkelman, and I'm Rotary member as well. And I'm on the Rotary Environmental Committee. I presented it to the city in the form of a spreadsheet a couple of times, especially to Jesse Dean in the past. And it's now the new panels, which are bigger per, bigger watts per size. We can get 9.36 kilowatts on the roof, which is a small project. That's the size that an average home needs. That'll produce about 11,000 to 12,000 kilowatt hours per year.
And so obviously, you said the location is going to be out, still on the roof?
Still on the roof, yeah.
And the safety of it. I just, I mean, I, I know even just down by the river right now, we've got so much vandalism going on right now. I just, I'm, I'm just really nervous about putting something of this cost exposed to the public.
Well, fortunately, it's not exposed because we're using microinverters, which go up on the roof underneath of the panels. So there won't be any inverters down inside of the pavilion. We'll probably have a QR code so people can scan the code and see how much it's producing at that point in time.
Okay. Do you have a design? Did I miss the design? Is there a, some?
Yes, there is a site plan and a feasibility study that's been done. And a series of other things that we can present to you. I actually have quite a bit of it on a thumb drive here. Or I could email it to you as well.
I think it will be worthwhile if we continue to pursue it. We would definitely want to see all of that. If, if you have it available to it, maybe you can.
We've never seen it.
Well, that's what I mean. Maybe you could email it to the Public Utilities Director and the City Administrator so they could.
It has been presented to us. Those particular plans.
Have been presented to us in the past. At whatever point we met last year, we did see those plans. So we should have them somewhere with some Park Board minutes.
Well, it's been up to date because those were two-year-old bids. So we had an update. Jim's electric bid is still the same. And that's about $6,900 for Jim's Electric to do all the plugins and lights and the service panel. They also offered to donate $1,000 of their bill to the Rotary Club. So that would then go to the city as well. And I just want to say, you know, this is a gift horse for you. So you're getting, you know, a couple of different things donated, something that'll bring you an additional 47, 4500, $45,000 of revenue in the future. I don't have the number, yeah, 45202. So please don't look the gift horse in the mouth.
All I want to say is congratulations on getting the Rotary Grant. We know how difficult that is.
I'm John Forrest, 159 Pineview, Ivan, Brainerd, co-chair of the Rotary Park Committee. And I, I do want to point out that electrification of the pavilion is part of a plan. And we've talked with the city under different administration about a vision that we would like to participate in, in having the electricity down there to drive cameras and also putting them into the law enforcement center where there's online real-time monitoring of the park. Security of the park, we're aware, is a huge issue. And we, we know that we want to, we want to be able to dress that through some cameras. One camera at the pavilion. We'd like to see another camera at the gateway. We'd like to see another camera to watch the parking lot. And to see another camera at the observation platform that we're hoping to build later this summer or start at least later this summer. So getting electricity to drive those cameras is also part of what we're trying to accomplish. Security is paramount and a part of our considerations. We want to have a safe environment, the best that we can provide down at the park.
Okay, so I have a, just a list of questions here. First thing is, if the city's going to expend funds on this project, I would assume that funds would have to follow procurement policy. What, how does the procurement work as far as who purchases the panels, who installs? I think the city's policy is to receive two quotes. And so I want to know if that's been considered as a part of this.
Okay, I can answer that.
Yep.
Okay. We did go out to get multiple quotes because it's also Rotary's policy that there be at least two bidders on, on anything. And the follow-on to that, I think there, in the past, there may have been some issues with somehow funds not being tracked very well. And so the, the cleanest way is, is for the city to actually issue the contracts with the understanding that Rotary would make a $10,000 direct payment to the supplier of the panels and racking such that that would offset any balance that was there.
If I may?
Yeah.
One thing that this cash flow summary doesn't project out is, at the end of the lifespan, what happens with these panels and what is the replacement cost going to be after 30 years? So you have $45,000 in net revenue over 30 years. Is that what the replacement panels are going to cost after that time where we're back to net zero?
Should I address that?
Yeah, I don't know what that is.
So first of all, 30 years is not the lifespan of the panels. That's the warranty. So let that sink in. What's warranted for 30 years to deliver a certain amount of power? And they will deliver at least 85% at the end of the 30 years that they did when they were new. And you can look on the warranties from the manufacturers that we have. That being said, the solar panels, I personally have bought solar panels 50 years ago and are still working fine. They've, they've been indoors and I don't take them out that much, but it's not a big deal. But in outer space, they've lasted for over 50 years. So I don't know that the solar panels will have to be replaced in 30 years. That's the warranty for them. But let's say they did. Let's say we had a bad hailstorm and they got smashed to pieces. Well, your insurance would cover that. So if there was, you know, a time where you wanted to re-up, maybe somebody came in with some great new technology and you could get twice as much electricity with the same location, then we could maybe replace the panels. Then we would recycle the old panels. There are recycling companies set up across the nation now for solar panels. One down in Owatonna, Minnesota, it's called Retrocycle. And they are actually, they have a market for solar panels because there's silver in them. Each panel has about $50 worth of silver in the circuits, circuit boards and so on that can be harvested. Plus then it's aluminum and glass. There's, there's very little other material, less than 1%. That's actually the silicon wafer that can't really be recycled. So most of everything in solar can be recycled fairly easily. In the future, I predict solar panels are going to be sold, old panels for the silver because the price of silver is going up. Any other questions on the product?
Product, I'll sneak down in here quick.
I, I just have a couple of comments. Thank you guys for doing this. Like, it's awesome. Come together. Congratulations on navigating so far the tangled web of Brainerd bureaucracy. You got all the right people in the same room. So we're getting somewhere with that. I'm, I'm on the BPU Commission and I'm, I'm 100% on board with the BPU Commission funding the gap and owning this thing. And I'll be a champion to make sure we can do what needs to be done to make sure this project comes to fruition. You guys have already done it. It sounds like a ton of legwork. We haven't seen any of it, so we're not going to pass any motions or anything yet. But I would like you guys to work with staff to determine the feasibility and find out what hurdles remain from BPU's end. And I would like BPU to work with the Park Board and the city to figure out what mutual agreements we need to figure out with ownership and within the web of Brainerd bureaucracy. This is doable. It's not, it's not complicated. You guys have done a lot of the legwork. You've gotten the grants. I think we can add staff time to your costs to increase the amount that the federal government will give us for the rebates. I think we can add the pedestal to the cost of this thing to get more from rebate. The more we can get from federal government rebates, the better. That's less coming out of our pockets. So we want this, I want this to happen. So whatever staff needs to do to get this ball rolling so that we can vote on a final version of owning this and getting construction started at our next meeting at June 25th, please, please proceed with all expedience. So.
Just a comment. I've been working with Trent Hockinson pretty much the whole while, three, four years now on this. So he's pretty well up on all the details that we've talked about tonight. And so I'm happy to continue working with him. He's been great.
Have you seen the schematics? Do you have any comments to add to the?
I haven't seen the latest piece, but we've had dialect back and forth. So like the gate, cameras at the gate, the security system. We've talked about that. There's some issues there because there's a lot of real estate back and forth. So just for a round, round number off the hip, for BPU to extend its service to the Rotary Pavilion right now is about 12 grand. So that's an extra cost that's on top of everything we're talking about. We ran the numbers in 2022. I think we were around 3,000 or something like that. We just ran the numbers again the other day and we're at 12. This is all remnants of COVID and supply and demands thing.
So put this together with Danny and the total cost, all in. What's it going to be? We want, we want to vote on it. We've been talking about it for years. You guys have been doing really good work. I want to put it to a vote on June 25th. And as long as the Park Board and the city is okay with BPU owning the asset, I mean, that should be.
It makes sense that BPU would own the assets. And I want to say that the contractor that we chose has a 10-year worksmanship warranty. So there's no labor for the first 10 years. And the materials are guaranteed for 30 years. And so there is very little maintenance and work that needs to be done. They're all solid state inverters. There's no moving parts. There's no fans. That's why they can guarantee them for 30 years.
Thank you.
Paul, do you have additional?
I just have one, one question. And Danny, would we be able to sell these recs then to AEP? Or how would that, how does that work?
I'll have to find out what we can do it, but assuming we are able to.
Trent's nodding and said yes?
Yes, we'd be able to.
Okay.
One more comment. Can we get the ball rolling also on the purchase power agreement? We're going to have to amend the whole purchase power agreement for us to be able to run the solar thing.
Okay.
Another added cost, but thank you.
Okay. I think we're done.
Do you guys have any further questions for these folks? I believe I think. Do you guys have any further questions for these folks? I, I believe I think we're, we're wrapping up then, so.
I think that, well, thank you so much for this special meeting and, and your endorsement of this project. We're thrilled to be able to go forward and we'll work with Trent and Patrick.
Patrick, forgive me, but I didn't hear the park commissioner say they were interested in this project.
Well, you know, going back to our previous comments, really was, we were very interested in it. We were more than willing to be okay with putting these up. We just didn't want to spend any money on it, was our position originally. So we wanted a low to no cost option. So if, if you guys are picking it up, let's put some on the roof. I don't have any problem with that. I don't think, that was our original position, so.
It's kind of what we thought.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. You pick up the tab, you know, we're, we're cool with it, so.
Okay, well, thank you very, very much.
All right. Any other further comments? Otherwise, we'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned.